Jaat, hey! Vice President Myron Lizer here. Komanche Nusle, Kholhana, Basis Chin, Otto, Komanche Deschiché, Klaus, Jüdeschenelli. It's good to be with you this evening on our COVID-19 Town Hall update. Let's go right to our opening prayer to open up this evening's time. Looking forward to seeing what has all happened and transpired in the last two days. So thank you again for joining us. You have city and God. We thank you, Lord. Another day of life, Father. We have almost closed the day out, Father, but, Lord, you show us great mighty things, Lord. And through this COVID, Father, 19, this pandemic, Lord, I pray that we grow in new ways, in spiritual ways. We grow in patience, we grow in prayer, we grow in initiative, Lord, to become a better citizen, become a better follower of you, or to become a better human being. Lord, we thank you that we can come to you for everything, Lord, your strength. And it's in our weakness where we're made stronger, Lord. Father, we thank you again that you know the number of hairs on our head, Lord. You know everything. You knew this COVID virus would be here upon us, Lord. But we just, we give you full acknowledgement of you knowing all things, Father. You also know when it will end, Father. Oh, do we pray for that? We ask for your provision and for your healing power, Lord, to come across the land. Lord, you said that if my people were called by my name would humble themselves and pray, seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, and you will hear from heaven, Lord, and you will heal the land. So, Lord, we just look to you, your preeminence, Lord. You created us, Lord. You know us, Father. In our mother's womb, your word says, Father. And so, Lord, we know that you have the answers. And if we depend on you, Lord, Father, we'll be given that hope and that strength, and, Lord, that resolve, Father. But just everything, Lord, will be not held back from us, for you wish to bless those, Lord, Father, who follow you and love you. So, Lord, we thank you again. Ask for your wisdom, Lord, which is the principal thing, Lord. Tonight, as we are here and receive data, Lord, Father, and we give updates, Lord, to the people, the landlord, in which you've given us, Lord, as our people, Father. Lord, we just look to you again for the power and the healing and the provision, Lord, Father. And we thank you again. We ask you to be with us, and again, this night, be with us all as you heal the land and you heal the people, Father. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. And amen. We just want to thank you again for joining us this evening, the Town Hall update here. And we just want to be able to give updates. We have census happening. We have COVID and updates and all kinds of things going on. We also have legislating that cares that funding and whatnot. So here for the greatest update right from our leaders' very own words, Lord. I pray you be with them during this time. And ladies and gentlemen, the President of the Navajo Nation, Mr. Jonathan, is who we thank him for his leadership. Yeah, Mr. President.
Everyone that's joining us today, and there's many people that are tuning in from all parts of the Navajo Nation and all part of the country, you know. We have Mervin from Gallup, and we have Sharon from Georgia watching, Jan from Vermont, Rosie Jones from Utah, Carol from Holbrook, Carla from the nation's capital here in Winderock, Lisa from Chinlea, and we even have Fred White on WebEx this evening, our Town Hall. So greetings to you, Navajo brothers and sisters, relatives. And every Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have this COVID-19 update. As we have mentioned, you know, sometimes we take a long time. And sometimes I do take a long time, and I apologize because there's a lot of information that needs to be given. And by the time others come on later on in the Town Hall, you know, the numbers start going down. The viewers' numbers start going down, and we don't want that to happen tonight. So we got Dr. Jill Jim that's going to be helping us. And on Tuesdays, we have our Town Hall meetings at 10:00 a.m. And then Thursdays, we do it in the evening, 6:00 p.m. And that tends to work out for many to get the information out. A little less turnout on Thursday evening, in the evenings. So maybe we move it back to Thursday at 10:00, but we'll see how that goes. Jesse James Zoso from Keentah, Kate Town, Birdy from Tali, Wheatfields, Arizona. Jaat, Lambert Benali from Farmington, New Mexico. So go ahead and put that PowerPoint up. Eli, Eli has been helping do these Town Hall meetings for us and doing an excellent job on getting us to be on WebEx. Try to get on there on time, you know, and we do have a busy schedule, of course, no excuse. But we just got off of a call with leadership in Fort Hood, Texas. As you all know, we've lost a couple of our warriors there at Fort Hood, and we're wanting answers. Appreciate the leadership there, giving answers to the family and also the Navajo Nation. Just want to make sure that investigation happens and we get all the factual documents to those families. And our condolence goes out to Private Sergeant Yaasi and Private Chi, who recently passed there in Texas. But as I said, we'll find more information about that in the upcoming days and weeks. Today, the numbers, tests completed, 98,408 tests that are completed. If you see the asterisks down below, it says multiple tests performed on same individuals have been deduplicated. I mean, we're not counting tests on one person, it's just that one person. 94,408 tests complete within the 24 hours. 340 tests were given. Auto negative test, 83,385 have tested negative. And that's 306 in the last 24 hours. Positive tests, 9,933 have tested positive. 18 new cases within the 24 hours. So, you know, we were doing well, ladies and gentlemen. You all, we're doing an outstanding job. You're still doing what you need to do. But it's starting to fluctuate up. We hit an all-time low since the start of the pandemic with zero the other day, but then we did have some deaths and one positive case before then. Today, it's 18. So we can't let down, ladies and gentlemen. 12 yesterday, so 12, 18. So in two days, 30 new cases. So keep doing what you're doing, ladies and gentlemen. Wear your mask, social distance, and wash your hands with soap and water, and stay home as much as possible. I know that many of you want to go out and travel. You know, you just need to stay the course. You're doing awesome, ladies and gentlemen. I want to commend you, you know, for listening and following through on the healthcare professionals' recommendations, listening to our leaders, council delegates, and local chapter officials telling us to stay home, and leaders, you know, are doing their very best to keep these numbers down. And I appreciate all the healthcare professionals, those in the front lines that are helping protect our citizens, you know, our police officers, our CHRs, our public health nurses, our public safety personnel, rangers, Fish and Wildlife Office. I mean, all, you know, I start naming them, and then I'll forget somebody, and then somebody will comment and say, "How about me?" You know, I'm talking about all our warriors on the front lines. And you know who you are, and we appreciate the work that you all are doing on behalf of our Navajo citizens. Of those 9,933 positive cases, you remember, this is from the start, the start of the pandemic, right around March 17th, all the way to today. These are new numbers as of one hour ago. And of those 9,933 positive cases, 7,169 have recovered from COVID-19. And we're hearing a lot of stories. And those of you that have gone through the virus, you know, we want to hear your story. If you're open to sharing your story. You know, we started a segment early on for folks that recovered. And we had one person that was willing to, you know, share their story. I know it kind of might feel difficult, or you don't want to share your story. But those that do, you know, contact us. And Eli, put our email address up there and let us know. I mean, just an encouraging video and maybe just letting them know what you went through through this virus. You know, I've heard stories that they don't wish this virus, all those symptoms on anybody, but people need to know. And to those that haven't caught the virus, you know, maybe that's one way that we can educate our citizens on how it feels for those of us that haven't caught the virus yet. And so 530 of our loved ones have lost their lives to COVID-19, three in the last 24 hours. So let's continue to pray for our families who've lost loved ones. Yeah, I think we've all have been directly impacted by this virus, this monster I call, you know. But let me just also say that, you know, these numbers would have been a lot worse if it wasn't for you Navajo people sharing this information that you're receiving from these COVID-19 Town Hall meetings to your relatives and your friends out there throughout the Navajo Nation. And, you know, because of you, we've managed to bring this down, this virus, to down to where we're at today. What we're looking at right now, too, is partnering up with some organizations. You may have heard that there are some COVID-19 vaccine trials that are happening. The third stage, third stage is almost the end of, you know, finding the vaccine. Then you go into the fourth stage, which is monitoring and making that vaccine a lot better. So it's not like we're testing it at the very beginning, which we don't know much about. But there was an incident yesterday by one of the companies that, you know, some one person came down with a mysterious illness. And who knows what that would have been the cause of it? Maybe not the vaccine itself, maybe something else, but who knows? But they stopped the trials. But for those companies that are continuing on, like what we have now is like Pfizer, BioNTech wanting to continue those trials. You know, ICHS and the Health Services are open to having these types of clinical trials here on the Navajo Nation. For those that want to participate, you know, don't get us wrong. We're not forcing anybody to go into these clinical trials. But those that want to, you know, try it, especially those that might come down with the virus early on, and to be able to get that type of information for Native Americans, because we're not, we don't have the same type of system. You know, you got Native Americans, you got non-Natives and all that. So sometimes these types of medicines work differently on different nationalities, different races. And so, you know, we have been leading the nation. You know, everybody's looking to the Navajo Nation and wanting to know what we've done to bring these numbers down pretty quick. And, you know, all I've been saying is Navajo people did it. You all have done it. And that means that we can't let down, too, right? We can't stop doing what we're doing. We can't stop wearing masks. We can't stop social distancing and washing our hands and using hand sanitizers. And also staying at home. Continue that, you know. These spikes lately, you know what it's contributing to? It's family gatherings. How do we know that? It's from our contact tracers. Those are the investigators to ask a lot of questions. And they'll connect with other experts out there, epidemiologists all over the nation, off the nation. So they will know where you caught the virus. If you think you're going to hide it or be sly about it, no, not in this age. They will find it, even though you're trying to hide it. They'll find it because they are very good at investigating. They'll call others. If someone comes down with the virus off the nation, and then they'll piece it together. And guess what? They'll find out you were there in that group there, and you brought it back to the Navajo Nation, and then you spread it maybe one weekend at a family gathering. All these high spikes have been contributed to family gatherings, ladies and gentlemen. I know we want to have, we're social people. We want to gather. We want to have birthday parties, but we just can't right now. And we should be wearing masks at all times, too. Wearing our mask as when we're out there, everywhere we go. And if you're out there a lot, maybe it's time for us to wear masks at home, too, you know. I'm not trying to scare anybody, but, you know, we just need to get control of our habits here. And once we get a vaccine, once we get past that, you know, I'm hopeful and prayerful that we'll get back to some what we used to do, right? I was going to say normal, but, you know, I think we are all in a fast-paced society before COVID-19. Was that normal? I don't know. Some, I think COVID really slowed us down to where we recognized important things in life, right? Like our family, our elders, our fields, our cornfields, our animals, taking care of them. And that's what I think many of us have recognized, you know, the teachings that have been handed down from our elders to our family members, you know. So when I say, I want to use the term "normal," I don't know if that was normal, but at least we got some time to spend with our families. So always cherish that. If you got young people watching, cherish that. Cherish that. This time, six months is a long time to be in a pandemic. But I hope many of you took the time to learn some Navajo, learn some of our way of life teaching, gone, you know, went out and farmed, you know, like we keep saying, "Go farm, get your farm reestablished." And I see a lot of harvests. We just purchased some fresh produce. We got some corn from the Shiprock area, which we'll be handing out. produce. We got some corn from the Shiprock area, which we'll be handing out at these food and supply distributions that we're gonna be uh doing in the next uh few weeks. Um, we used the, the Carezac monies to purchase some food and hygiene kits that we're gonna be uh handing out. Uh, matter of fact, tomorrow we'll be in Alamo, uh New Mexico, and then Tohajile, and then uh Casamero Lake, Otto Little Water. We weren't able to do it the other day. I know I mentioned it on the town hall, but we just didn't get a shipment in time. That's when we got the, the weather, right? Some cold weather came in, still here. Um, so pretty much harvest season is, I think is gone now. I mean, the, the planting season now is really getting our plants, our, our fruits and vegetables prepared for the winter. And that's what Saturday is all about. That's why we reopen Saturday. Um, to prepare for um the winter, getting firewood. I know there was uh questions about confiscating a chainsaw. I, I don't, we didn't say anything about confiscating chainsaw, but we just said that, you know, uh chainsaw, chainsaws shouldn't be used after a certain time from one o'clock into the afternoon after that, because that's when the the extreme heat is and that's where the dry point is. So even a chainsaw can start a spark and start a fire. But with the recent rains and the update we received from the weather services, uh Vice President and I signed a um proclamation uh proclamation, does that sound right? Anyway, it's the um lifting of the fire restrictions. So once the Attorney General and B I A uh Director signs it, then there'll be no restrictions on using chainsaws after one P M. So that should be out today or tomorrow and ready for the weekend. And so prepare for the winter. Um, that's why we did Monday and that's not there uh to travel. That's not what we opened up Saturday for. It's to prepare for the winter because the public health experts have said that during the winter there could be a second wave of COVID nineteen, but if we prepare now, we could keep those numbers down, keep those numbers down. And the school will remain uh online. Everyone here on the Navo Nation, we talked to the B I E and also the Assistant Secretary of uh Department of Interior today. And the first quarter is gonna be online. And that's up to almost uh Thanksgiving. But we're gonna reevaluate it a week or two before to see where we're at. Uh, we have four statuses. One is orange. We reopened in orange. Well, let me say red, orange, yellow, and green. Red is of course high numbers of COVID positive. Everything stays closed. We're not there no more. Now we're in orange. We reopened in orange status for Navo Nation government. So the next stage will be yellow. We were looking at possibly moving into yellow status, but we decided to wait. If you look at our curve uh from March all the way to today, there's, of course, there's that big spike. And then as you start going down, there's little spikes as you go down. Those little spikes are, or those little increases, those little humps are from the holidays that we've had previously. And that's uh Memorial Day weekend, there it is, Memorial Day weekend way up there. If you look at, it looks like uh El Capitan, those of you from Kieta, LG territory. But uh you see the peak, it, it went up to the top. As you go down in uh almost June, right, May twenty-something is where Memorial Day was, you could see that little jump. And that was from a three-day weekend holiday. You go down the next one into almost July, that was around uh July fourth and also uh sovereignty, sovereignty day, uh retreat treaty day. And that was a spike. And then you kind of go down and you can see that little rise at the bottom now. And that, that's because we got down so low, like down to zero and one. And then you got these spikes of seventeen and eighteen. That's why it makes it look like it's starting to go up high. Um, but the reason why we're gonna hold off on, for two weeks to reevaluate this is because uh of the Labor Day weekend. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we heard uh a lot of people say that there was a lot of traveling going on um throughout the Labor Day weekend. And if you're shaking your head and saying no, just look on some of your social media pages. I mean, you, if you want to be sly, don't put your stuff on social media because you can see you're out there in various places. Uh, you know, Utah has a spike of COVID cases because they reopened their schools in the Salt Lake City area. Phoenix area's Arizona had a spike because of the university's reopening. And you know, those uh Navajos, uh relatives of ours that are going to school down and, and uh the universities here in Arizona, let them, tell them, you know, get them informed about what those precautions that they need to take while they're uh, while they're there. Um, and so we're gonna, we're gonna stay in orange status and then uh we'll reevaluate uh this. And I know that some of you are saying we're on an all-time low. Come on, reopen. Uh, we're following through on wearing masks, but there are still some uh spikes that are happening here on the Navajo Nation. That is a very concern. Um, we're, we're, we want to be uh safe, you know, we don't want to jump the gun or do a victory lap, not just yet. There's no vaccine here. Uh, so we gotta stay the course and help each other out throughout this uh uh pandemic. Otto, and then what we're wanting everybody to, to recognize is that we're gonna be back out there um doing food and supply distributions and we're teaming up with the U S Census. And so uh for the U S Census, uh last week, um we had we had um a response rate of eighteen point seven percent um of people self responding. And um but we got new numbers some uh September ninth. And um Eli Arbin did uh respond. September ninth, the new numbers is we jumped uh about point four percent. Now we are at nineteen point one percent. So good job. Um, people have been stopping to do their census. So we teamed up with the U S Census. So once you get your food and your hygiene kits as you're leaving, there's a place there, we have internet access, we got people with uh P P Es on and have their iPads. So you don't even have to touch anything. You just tell the Census worker and they'll type it in and they'll shoot it out back to the Census for you. So nineteen point one percent. And the new agency updates is Fort Defiance at twenty-two point six percent. And then Chinli at fifteen point nine percent. Okay. Uh, eighteen point nine percent for Western Agency and nineteen point five percent Eastern. Um, it's quite interesting. Eastern went up pretty a, a lot. Um, since, because we went, we were out there in Casamero Lake, uh Tor- and I'm sorry, Torion, Pueblo Pantado and um White Horse Lake. And Northern Agency nineteen point one, we gave out a lot of information during the roadblock and uh um checkpoints. So uh Chinli, we're out in Black Mesa and Blue Gap Tucci and uh um Serrana Cottonwood. So we didn't really need to um encourage our people in Chinli to um self-respond. Our goal is fifty percent. I know that's a big goal, but I know we can do it. I know we can achieve that goal, ladies and gentlemen. Let's get uh everybody self-respon- it took, it takes only like five to ten minutes to do the census. It's at twentytwentycensus.gov. Check that out and uh you can self-respond um pretty quick. Uh, so uh yeah, that, that's pretty much all I'm gonna um update you all. Otto, I didn't die soon after. Uh, then he not yet and he the shni do this. So Jonathan is uh the Navajo Nation President. I do come back. Uh, na, na, shni gi adi, uh, the cross and scragi. Uh, the coila e beda dolna do uh e, e ba nda huile na, na ki jinda aneshu ne, nezna olkila obino. Do di jinda anesho i, ah, hashtan olkila. Ako, e onikpea de hazen dollel, do ba de hoshne dollel, da di no da. Uh, he joba de ni kid. Ako, nshunego e, uh, kodo ni hana neshu da la, na hoshne. Do shehla, jo di na lnegi ya konil, dena be keya poka. Akon da, a la, a shee de kui chun shee e, den, den delkile ya konat e. E ni he, kodo, lka natcha, gibini na. Uh, shehla. Ako, de konil, le gi e di koni, ak e ni tlini giya. La, han de tlehe gi beni na, na lni. Kono ni he ke ni hine, uh, beda delne. Do, he shein le har, she bela gaan e ke yate. Ani hin, he ke da, nlini gi, adi ndakhego. Ado, e di the cross and scragi, na hast e it's ada. Uh, beda delne to, aden na zago, e kota la, han dahtle. Beni nagi kon, uh, na lni ho, eshi keinolli ni, e ba ntsa da, ke stova ba kuda nosen. Ashho de, ado, la, han dahtle, and I know, la shee e da dolna, ya la, dene. Huimzen de, jo e beni na, e kon, uh, ni he joba, hinshke, de shni ya, di kon uh maski da, da gi, uh, chudal, i do, ado, iye de kola, ya dal, ti, dene, e na, ti, do. Di talawash, ni he la, be, ka, da, ke stova, di hand sanitizers, do, nde, ni, e ro, chudal. Uh, hagan da, so, tane, de, jo, di zeba, den, han di, nde, lka, de, che. So e, shein onikpea zen dollel, chkeinolli ni, akon de, shehla. Lego, uh, di bindal, ke rigi, uh, na di, ke, chegon, na, i, do, ha, ha, le, ha, ha, le, da, la, da, dene, nosli ni. Do, tago, ye, de, de, skine, a, skine, so, ya, ya, konza, da, da, no, da. Na, uh, na di, ke, chegon, da, konda, il, ni, shee, kodo, de shni, ni, ni, he ke, ni, hine, dene. E da, eh, kodo, ni hina, ta, ni. Uh, i ke ndazo, do, da, ista, oh, bena, ya, konil, di zel, in, dal, nlini gi do. Uh, adi, uh, bena, neshi, de, lini gi do, uh, i ke ndaze. Do, da, ista, de shno, na hoshne. Di kon, gi, ndal, ke, do. So, ye, go, da, eshi ke, e ro, shina. Ado, hadainolli, oh. La shee e, ya, ya, la, hagan da, sa, da, huimzen de. Oh, you, ye, ha, ha, na, neshalot, eh, hagan da, sa, al. Ado, di kon, na lne gi do, uh, e, kon, chian, do. Di, ha, shee da nosen, ni, ya, be, be, asta, da, eh, da, lini gi, da, tlingbe, da, lini gi. Eka na, konda, dena be keya poka, ka, nazan, hada, so, kon, ta, de, di, ka, to, e, nde, ni. Skam, in, le, Alamo, dena, ke, do, le, ado, Tohajile. Uh, ado, sena, ado, be, ke, je, e, kujikasamero lake. Ado, uh, i, ah, da, zeh, uh, shla, olkila, da, shi, di, olkila, da, shi. E, uh, little water, je, do, to, chen, de, shni, ya. E, ah, nde, kha, do, le, chkeinolli ni, e, nde, ni. Ado, e, ben, nache. Ad, ndakhe, gi, ben, nache. Dene, da, yoltcha, gi, adi, ndal, neshi, gi, do, adi, bena, neshi, de, lini, do, le. Ashho de, U S Census, egi, hada, to, le. E, ben, nache, kon, peso, yahananda, dena be keya poka, che. Dene, da, yoltcha, gi, ben, nache. Oh, kani, you, da, di, no, dene, da, da, yoltcha, gi, go, da, jo, da, li, ya, go, e, a, a, shee, peso, ni, he, che. La, ni, che, nut, at, volle. Ado, pandai, neshi gi, jo, ah, kui, che. Kodo, ya, adadi, ni, le, ya, adai, uh, na, ha, da, da, le. Oh, da, la, da, di, no, kota, e, ya, sa, ni, he, che, kunde, ni. Di hada, so, gi, jo, e, kota, be, uh, jo, asta, da, lini, uh, di census, ben, nache. So ni he joba, de, ni, ke, da, ashho de, uh, na, ha, da, da, le. Uh, e, beni na, e di, uh, chian, de, ni, ho, ya. Ado, tsoda, la, go, kujishin, bahaz, ah, do, le. So e, onikpea, hazen, do, le, chkeinolli ni. Um, so, al, suso, de, shli, la, kodo, ado, shee, ye, go, da, ti, do, hadainolli, do. Uh, di, be, che, di, ka, ndeshni, oh, ah, ni. Jo, ni, shee, kodo, ni, hina, ha, da, da, ni, hina, antin, be, na, sti, ni, ka. Nde, shni. Kodo, na, ta, ni, ke, so, zo, zeh, in, be, ke, so, zo, tsula, be, ke, so, zo. Jo, e shein, kota, e, di, be, che, di, ka. Uh, eshi keinolli ni, di, na, lne gi. Ado, uh, e, ben, nache, do, uh, ben, he, zil, do, le. Dene, ni, tlini. Uh, ako, shehla, do, di, heni, hela, la, you know, I just want to conclude by saying to everyone, we will overcome, we're overcomers. You know, we heard the term resilient, we heard the term of uh self-reliance and self-sufficient. And ladies and gentlemen, you have magnified uh self-reliance to people. And people are looking at us. People are looking at you, the Navajo people. And they're blown away by how we uh fought this virus here on the Navajo Nation. We're fighting a war, right? We're fighting a monster. And I could say that we've won our first battle. But in a, in a war, there's multiple battles, right? And there may be a second wave. That means there's a second battle. And now we got to prepare ourselves for that second battle in the winter. And how do you do that? You know, let's prepare ourselves. Get wood, get some food, let's stock up so that our people can stay at home a little bit more. And that also means strengthening our immune system, our body. Eating right, staying active, walking, running. You know, running for stronger, healthier Navajo Nation, tenth annual is on it, is happening now. So you know, check out the website. Check out our webpage, check out our social media page if you want to sign up. Ten weeks. And those of you that want to challenge yourself uh with the help of your healthcare, um, uh, your doctor or your nurses there, uh, there's a, there's a running plan there that we shared with you. If you follow that running plan, uh, I can say, if you follow it on all the days, I could say that I can guarantee you in ten weeks, you will be able to run a half marathon. If you ever thought uh if I could run a, a five K, you could do that. If you follow this plan, you could run three point one miles in three weeks. Follow the plan. And in six weeks, you could run a ten K, six point two miles, follow the plan. Now, if you want an ultimate challenge, and if you want to challenge yourself to running a half marathon, you can do it in ten weeks. And this is one of the uh training plans that I started out with when I lost a hundred pounds, you know. And uh that's how I started. So just to encourage you, it can be done, you can do it. Um, so, and, and this is just not the only one. There's scavenger hunts, you can take pictures of yourself. You don't have to run. You can always, you can do hiking, you can be biking, you can do horseback riding, take pictures of yourselves in some of the most beautiful parts of the Navajo Nation. Send it to us and we'll make a photo collage of it. Uh, we have, we live in the most uh beautiful part of the United States. So anyway, thank you so much, everybody, and uh God bless. Continue to wash your hands, wear your masks, social distance, and as much as you can, stay home. We love you, we appreciate you. You're all doing an outstanding job in fighting this virus. So.
But we're hoping to bolster the Tohajalei area and eastern, as President said, you know, Alamo, Tohajalei, Casamero Lake, you know, we're looking for place, those places to show an increase here. But I can't quite readily pull up those numbers, but just know, we do advocate, we help Arvin as he's helping us as well, and we want our people to be counted. Our numbers across Indianland are pretty, pretty low. And with the deadline looming here at the end of this month here, and of course, we're advocating for an extension of that because we're really needing our numbers to be bolstered here right now. And so let's continue to reach out, and those of you out there, cross the line here, if you haven't been counted, get out, take your family, make sure all of your family and extended family has been counted. We need to stand and be counted here. This is very important. The representation politically, it's also funding wise, and you know, we just need everyone to be counted. So I think that's really all I have to share here. Do want to reiterate again what President had said earlier about our second battle here, as we come into the flu season, we do have COVID-19 to still maintain our highest priority in mitigating it and keeping our vigilance up for that. But also the cold and flu season upon us now, what is that going to look like? So let's not be fearful, but let's be faithful, let's pray, let's protect ourselves again. Work and, you know, be vigilant like it depends on us, but pray like it depends on our Creator. So those are the words I want to leave you with this night until next Tuesday when we do, we convene again in our COVID-19 Town Hall update. You all, please be safe. Our leadership here, President, myself, our Cabinet will be praying for you all out there to be safe for this weekend. You're cutting wood, be safe, maintain your mask and social distancing. I know we all like to do it together. In fact, we'll be going out here, I believe, this weekend too, and cutting some wood and bringing it home and, you know, helping those that don't have it. So we're all in this together. I want to appreciate that President for his leadership, also our Cabinet and all of our health professionals and, you know, good segue into Dr. Jim as she's ready to go to give you some more updates here for this COVID-19 pandemic. So without further ado, thank you, Dr. Jim, for all you do. Thank you for helping keep us all safe and all of our Shidnei all across the land here. Thank you again, Dr. Jill Jim, the Executive Director for our Department of Health here on Napa. Take it away.
Thank you, Vice President, for all the information that you're providing us only regarding continuing to stay vigilant in this pandemic. We are still in a pandemic, so I'm always grateful for the support and also the reinforcement as we're continuing to look at ways to still administer community mitigation strategies. So a lot of these decision-making that are done are policy-level making decisions that has to be done in order to live in this new day today. In this society, everything has changed, so it's very important to keep up to date about a lot of efforts around COVID-19. So and then also to President Nas, thanks to you for also providing information to our people and also providing the numbers. We are, could potentially see a rebound, but we hope that it's not a sustained rebound. And so we really just have to stay cautious after we're consulting with our public health professionals and medical professionals. We come together and with the epidemiology to make a lot of decisions. So I just wanted to do an update regarding the COVID-19 and those that are listening this evening, just want to, to share this with your grandma, your grandpa, your parents and relatives. And usually on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I like to share information, and these are usually preventive messages that we share with everyone else. So I just want to ensure that, and these are accessible through our Facebook page on the Navajo Department of Health. So there are always common messages that we like to provide to our relatives and our family members and everyone else is to maintain our wearing of masks, also social distancing, cleaning and disinfecting high-touch surface areas, washing hands for 20 seconds or more. And today, I want to also reinforce the washing your hands and doing it properly. Always just relook at and what do you do on a daily basis, or what your kids do, or your friends and your relatives. And it's always a good practice, a hygiene practice, to wash your hands completely and properly to avoid transmission. So wet your hands with water completely, apply enough soap to cover all hand surfaces, and rub hands together and scrub everywhere on your hands. So I always like to make sure that you get in between the hands, your fingernails in and over, around your thumb, on your palms, on your, around your wrists. So those are just ways to wash your hands properly and also rinse your hands with water and then also drying them completely and using a single-use towel as well. So those are just reminders, if you are not able to wash your hand, use a hand sanitizer. And also going back to what we were currently monitoring is that if you did attend a gathering or travel off the Navajo Nation during the Labor Day weekend, or you attended a gathering on the Navajo Nation, you might want to just consider any symptoms that you might want to look for. Right now, that, as you know, that COVID-19 is similar to a respiratory disease, so look for coughs, fevers, chills, muscle pains, sore throat, shortness of breath, new loss or tastes or smell. So those are just some symptoms you can consider if you feel like you were even around another person that is considered a close contact. But if you do have higher level of symptoms that require medical attention, make sure you go to your nearest hospital. And also, as just another reminder, with gatherings, these are just a few items that we still want to avoid, social or family gatherings. I think there's a difference between social and family gatherings. Of course, social gatherings could be anywhere else but your family, but family gatherings are more being detected by our case managers and contact tracers. So it is difficult. So continuing to give up all your social activities with family and friends is a lot to ask, and we understand that. So just be patient and, and we don't have a vaccine or a cure, so basically, this is what we can use, is we know that masks have been effective and also social distancing has been effective as well. As a reminder, the disease spreads easily person to person as well, so we know that and we've learned that through this pandemic, that it's, it's not over. I mean, we can't really let our guards down, so it can be and it easily is transmittable, but it also can easily be killed with basic cleaning and hygiene practices. So family gatherings is just as unsafe as other social gatherings, because sometimes you think that you are trusting your own extended family members, but even if they're on your own extended family members, all of those precautions, wearing a mask and all of those, social distancing has to apply because you do not live with those extended family members and are either, they're considered non-household members and they're visiting. So we would encourage everyone to save, to gather more virtually still as much as you can. Those with underlying health conditions should still avoid any sort of gathering. It doesn't matter if it's social or family gatherings, because we know that these individuals, our relatives with health conditions and their, their body is not able to fight against COVID in some cases. So So it's very, our, our own immune system, especially if it's already compromised, it's not able to fight a disease that really impacts more than your respiratory system and your body. So I just want to reiterate that as well. Another message that I wanted to do this evening is that gatherings, if you are gathering some sort or nature, that it increases your risk for COVID, especially if they're gathering indoors. Basically, in an enclosed area with no ventilation, you're basically, it's a recipe there if you're not actually then not wearing any mask or taking any precautions. And then another, as I mentioned, was the multiple households coming together, that you are not from the same household. So if you live day-to-day, you know what you do in your immediate family or in your immediate household, but when you bring in multiple households and you're gathering, and we have heard of these cases, our outbreaks out there in the communities with parties that are around 30 people or more, so it's very dangerous. It's really advisable not to even gather in that quantity of people. And then you begin to share food. I'm sharing food as well. You really don't know how it's prepared, who prepared it, were they sick, were they not sick? Because all of those droplets from COVID-19, just like flu, could be transmitted on the food, either the trays or the items or the utensils. So that's why it's very important to not try to share any food, bring your own food or bring prepared food from somewhere that can be ordered, but that's not really doable here on the nation. And also duration of gathering, the longer you gather with your family or in a social gathering or in an enclosed area, I mean, the higher you are at risk because you are there within, in a, in a, in a area, you could be there all day. And so the less risk is like to avoid and transmit any kind of COVID is like having less duration of these gatherings. We've heard of birthday party, drive-through, gather parties, and basically people just do curbside delivery for birthdays. So I think that continues to be a recommendation rather than now coming in person and celebrating. We can all celebrate in a safe way if we want to protect those that we love. We have lost a lot of our elders, and I think that it's very important that we continue to be protective of those individuals because they're, they carry a lot of the wisdom in our, in our cultural teachings or traditional teachings. So and even if you do gather, if people don't take precautions, you use one towel in a restroom too. And that's really another recipe for disaster. If you don't have a single towel, paper towel or of some sort, if you're using one towel when people go to the restroom, that's not good either. So it's very transmittable, like I said, with droplets. So other ways to gather safely is just to virtually meet. We've done that before with Zoom meetings and also a family social group on Facebook or somewhere that can help keep our family members connected by chatting and going online and sharing pictures. But you can also go the old-fashioned way by mailing letters and pictures. I mean, who does that? I haven't write a letter or a note, but I would love to do that after I saw some recommendation is sending and printing pictures. I mean, some, we've come into using technology for a very long time, but I think there is still ways to help share pictures. And I think, I remember my grandma really enjoying pictures, printed-out pictures, and leaving pictures for her. And I think that is a really good gesture. And then also teaching the little ones to send pictures and become pen pals with their own cousins too. And other online things, if you're really into online meeting together, you can do family online boxes. I mean, we have Dropbox, we have Box, we have Google Drives and things like that as well, that you can use as a way of sharing items and pictures virtually too. So there are options today. And playing online games is another avenue if you have good internet. I know that in my own family, we have now that cousins are playing games online and they're connecting that way, so they don't miss each other and they still need to connect. And so there are ways to connect with the younger generation and also a whole family or even just with the older generation by using old-fashioned mail too. So I hope that people take up some of these recommendations this evening and possibly put a letter in a, in a box tomorrow, in a mailbox to someone. And I think it's so important because it's really, really an important gesture, I think, to your own family members. And I hope that you guys experience something very kind or very, in return, I think people will appreciate it. So when we talk about signs and symptoms, as I talked about the Labor Day gatherings, if people did gather, and there were, there will be individuals that will not show any signs and symptoms, and we usually often call that as asymptomatic, and they'll show mild or no symptoms, but they could definitely be carriers of the virus and they will be spreading the disease without knowing it. And if you do suspect someone has been exposed, the best thing to do is quarantine for 10 days. And most often, these symptoms will occur between two to 14 days. But all of this is to protect our family, yourself, our communities, and the best way is to avoid becoming infected is to practice social distancing and wearing a mask out in public. And sometimes we always wonder when it is safe to be around others. I know early on, there was a lot of fear, and when someone got COVID, I mean, I think people might have been very dismissive and thought, I don't want to be around this person, and I don't know if I will get it just being around this person. But there are guidelines out there, and we just want to ensure that, yes, after a certain duration of time, it is safe to be out, around others and being public and be okay with it. And so if you think or know if you had COVID-19 symptoms, you, you can be around others at least 10 days since symptoms first appeared, at least 24 hours since last fever without use of fever-reducing medications such as Tylenol or Ibuprofen, and that the symptoms have improved. And if you don't have any symptoms, but you tested positive, you can wait 10 days, have passed since test, and continue to have no symptoms. And it really, really relates to being patient. I mean, just because you feel better at day five or you still continue to have no symptoms at five days, it's very important to still follow the guidelines because you don't know when you're still infectious. So these are based on CDC recommendations, so just follow the recommendations and you will decrease your chances of transmitting the disease to someone else. So it will really take patience. And I, I just want to remind everyone, I think we are all doing a good job. If the numbers keep going down, that, that means we are all practicing a lot of these recommendations. So if you have been around someone with COVID as a close contact, it's important to quarantine for 14 days after your exposure. So if you've been around a person for 15 minutes with less than three feet, we recommend, but some say six, but I would say three feet, and especially if they're not wearing a mask, it's, you're more likely at risk to be exposed to COVID-19. And that's why you quarantine for 14 days and you look for symptoms and you continue to do that. And if you are fine after 14 days, it's okay. You, you did your 14 days and you, you contributed to not spreading the disease. And so I think you did a good deed by quarantining yourself if you've been around someone that has COVID, especially if you can, are considered a close contact. So and I think it all just goes to just understanding how the disease is transmitted. Other things that are going on in our communities are possibly traditional ceremonies. So we recommend remote prayers and ceremonies, no gatherings in closed areas, limit five or fewer people, do not attend if you are sick. And if you are sick and you are maybe thinking you have allergies, you might have the stomach flu, I mean, sick in general, because a lot of these symptoms are related to COVID-19. So we just say sick in general. Do not attend if you're exposed to COVID-19, as I mentioned. Use a shade house or hogon with windows. Everyone must wear a face mask, do not hug or shake hands, avoid sharing objects. And so recently, the contact tracers in some of the communities did receive information. There were, there was a ceremony that took place where people were sharing items, and that could impact a lot of exposures. And so these recommendations are very important. So it's important to avoid sharing objects, bringing an individual drinking water in closed containers, because you don't transmit any viruses if you do that. Prepare your own supply of medicine, herbs and pollen. Avoid sharing medicine, herbs and bundles. Clean and disinfect all objects used. Wash your hands after or use a hand sanitizer. Eat meals while seated from six feet apart and avoid having children at the ceremony. There's one other thing that I'm also wanting to know more about and interested in is that the number of young, young individuals, especially children under 10. And if you look at our information regarding the demographics of who got COVID, we have about a little bit over 500 individuals that are less than 10 years old that were tested positive, and a little bit over 1,000 for those between 10 and 19 years of age. So, and so these are the reasons. I mean, they could be definitely asymptomatic and are the ones that are transmitting the virus to other individuals without knowing it. And so sweat lodge, early on and through the pandemic, we also were receiving reports of exposures in sweat lodges. So for those reasons, we're providing these recommendations. And so one person in a sweat lodge at a time, avoid sharing items, bring your own water, prepare your own supply, do not insert hands in another person's medicine bag, wear a mask, bring a towel to sit on and remove after use, hang in direct sunlight, have someone outside for any assistance, ventilate air out of the sweat lodge for at least 24 hours before we use, remove and hang out any fabric, door, floor coverings in direct sunlight, clean and disinfect other items used. So these are guidelines that are very important to continue to operate sweat lodge and ceremonies safely. And next, I want to talk about the census. I think it's very important that we take precautions for any visitors that are non-household members. So they may become, they will knock on your door and they'll say, how are you doing? Have you completed your census and do you need help? So wear a face mask when a person visits your home, maintain a six-feet distance when completing the questionnaire, avoid handshakes, avoid sharing items, clean and disinfect all items used to complete the questionnaire and wash your hands after completing the questionnaire. So this could be done at the drive-throughs or either at, at home when a census worker comes to your home as well. And just as a reminder, disinfectant safety, early on, we did hear of individuals that were drinking or possibly injecting bleach and Lysol as a way to, considered as treatment for COVID-19, and that isn't the case. It's very toxic to your skin, especially if you ingest it, and it's very important to read the labels as much as clearly and understanding them, because another part of this is that you shouldn't mix any chemicals. And storing out of, storing the chemicals out of reach for children is very important. And if you feel like someone might have ingested this, there is a poison helpline, so you can call 1-800-222-1222. So I just want to reiterate the disinfectant safety. Also, when we talk about grief, I think I always want to consider grief as a response to loss, and we also are experiencing all of the pandemic aftermath as we are at our highest in mid-May. So I always say we're still healing. I myself consider myself healing as well, and so it's a, it's a time for us to all heal, and this might come with a lot of emotions. It might deal with job loss, financial anxiety from the impact, loss of safety, you're worried about loved ones, feeling of loneliness, changes in your daily life, I mean, special plans and event cancellations, clashes with family members of, over how to protect yourself, worrying about how to pay for rent, sadness of how the pandemic changed the world, fears for the future. All of those are all okay, we're all human beings, we're all experiencing this. And so just take care of yourself and others, and there are ways to get help and there's ways to cope with this. Practice self-care, give yourself time to heal, reach out to family members and friends, and you can all do that safely. You can call, you can use the virtual means, as I mentioned, and find some support in that way. It can be through your friends or family. You could reach out to other ways of maybe connecting with people that you have been talked to in a long time, and it's always good to reach out and then, and to take care of yourself and your body by taking deep breaths, stretching or meditating, and also, and most importantly, eating healthy, exercising. Through the Navajo Nation Special Diabetes, they're doing their virtual run and walk, and we had over, we have over 500 people registered right now. And I'm really glad that we are taking care of ourselves and because by going outdoors, you're really reducing your risk of transmission, but always wear a mask as much as you can. And if you need help dealing with and coping with grief or just stress or frustration, you can call the Navajo Regional Behavioral Center at 505-368-1438 or 505-368-1467. And also, there are after-hours they have as well, phone numbers for Chinley, Dilcon, Farmington and Shiprock. And also, you can always go to the hospitals, your local health facilities all have mental health services as well. So with Indian Health Service or the Tribal Health Organization, they have traditional practitioners as well. And so I, we all are going to heal in this process, but if you're really needing help right now, please reach out to these services that are provided for individuals across the Navajo Nation. And one last reminder is that we still have our 32-hour lockdown this weekend. It starts on Friday at 9:00 PM and ends on Monday at 5:00 AM. So the daily curfew still exists from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So conduct all your errands and everything. And as President and Vice President mentioned, continue to make Saturday a day of preparing for winter. And all, all of this will eventually, one day, we will eliminate COVID-19. In the meantime, it's still In the meantime, it still exists. And we still are going to have to continue to practice all of the safety measures in order to keep COVID-19 away from the Navajo Nation. So